Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. We're going to get through this together. Good morning, everyone. At time being eight oh eight, I wanted to give an opportunity for voters to register. We're going to go ahead and get started because we have some things to do before we get to the board. For all of those who have not had to pledge their meat, I'm Helen Hanks. I'm your town moderator. We're going to start right off. And for those able to stand, let's stand and do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming out for tonight. Thank you all for kicking on to things. This mic is very interesting. Maybe so we can fix our justice that would be great. Because this is going to be a long line because I haven't been able to... For anyone who's been in military service or is active in military service, could you just stand? Well, let's just applaud and appreciate all of them serving in our region. If you have the town report, if you could turn to page twenty and twenty-one. I just want to go over some of the moderator rules. I'm not going to read all twenty-four. First and foremost, being that it's 2025, if you have a cellphone, I request that you silence it, please. I won't charge you a dollar, but I will consider it. If you need to use your cellphone, something important's happening, just please exit, take that call outside your room. Individuals speaking for or against a motion are asked to please keep your remarks to approximately two minutes. We have still our fantastic double-sided paper plates that we'll put you on target. All questions, please direct go through the moderator. We want to have a nice cordial process, and that way we won't have individual debates between people. A motion, a limited debate, is non-debatable. It does require a two-thirds vote, just so we know that. A motion to kill a motion, one would move to postpone it indefinitely, it is debatable and requires a majority vote. Under fourteen, a yes vote, you will say yea. A no vote, you will say no. So if you're in favor, you will say yea. If you're not in favor, you will say no, please. Number nineteen, a motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider is brought forward if there's new information that was not discussed during the active debate, and the motion to reconsider is done from a person whose side won that debate. Okay? It's all listed there in nineteen, and if you have any questions, we can go through them. I think it's also important, it's okay to disagree, but it's not okay to be disagreeable or disrespectful. So I just want to remind us all that it's okay to have good debate. Let's just do it kindly and with respect to one another's opinions. All right. If you want to change any of these rules, they would take a two-thirds majority vote. So if there are any rules you want to discuss, certainly we can discuss them now. But otherwise, there you are on page twenty and twenty-one. Please come to the mic. Also, when you're speaking to a motion or anything, come to the mic, state your name, where you live in the town. If you are a non-resident, you need to be in that back area. And before I go to you here, so please look to your left, look to your right. If you don't look like it, that's a neighbor or somebody you know, please come let me know. And just for a brief moment, if everyone could just raise their voter cards, that would be great. So I know everybody is really out there. All right. So those with the voter cards on the back, if you could actually move into this space, you were sitting in the non-resident area. We want you over here, please. I want to introduce two of my assistant moderators, Deb Shepherd, if you could stand. She'll, if I'm in doubt, she'll do counts on this side. Ron Pirate, if you'll stand up, he'll do counts on this second row. Now I'll recognize your area. If the mic is not red, then it's not live.
Rule number fifteen, letter B. I have a 2025 voter card, not a 2020 voter card, so I don't know if you need to amend that. I know you're stickler for the rules.
Thank you, Eric. Oh, agreeing. Those in favor of the typo on page twenty-one that says 2025, say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, we're not going back in time. All right. So thank you for noting that.
Steve Lurie, School Street. There's ten, two-minute limit. Can we sit down and after someone gets back up, get back up and speak again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for that.
I would like to move till we accept the moderator's rules as amended.
I have a second. All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, say no. All right. The rules are adopted. Okay. Moving right along. We're going to start with a little presentation, and I'm going to try to actually pause. I'm going to ask Chairman Constantino to introduce us to the Board of Selectmen in the event that you have not met them. And then we'll turn over, and we'll introduce you to the members of our committee sitting at the center table.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To my right is newly-elected Eric Adams, Catherine Dawson, John Scanlon, retiring Joe Jessman, Town Administrator Scott Halyer, Finance IT Director, what's his name, Tim Harrison. And in the glass enclosure back there is our rock, Amy Despin. She's our Selectment Assistant Administrator Assistant, I should say, but she's our old...
I introduced, if I did not, Chuck Mitchell, also an assistant moderator, Kim Souls, our town clerk. And I'm going to turn it over to Billy Lawrence to introduce the Budget Committee.
Hi. My name's Bill Lawrence. I'm the Chair of the Tilted Budget Committee. The rest of the committee is comprised of Stanley Brown, Christine Dabitsky, Deb Shepherd. John Hanson is not here today. He's on vacation. And our Selectment Representative is Joe Jessman.
Okay. In addition, I'm Kathy Mitchell, who's helping us with the slides. Thank you, Kathy. And now I'll actually turn it over to Chairman Constantino for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the townspeople in the Board of Selectmen, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to Selectman Joe Jessman for over twelve years of dedicated service to the town of Tilton, and especially his service on the Board of Selectmen. His down-to-earth, common sense approach and insightful contributions to the board have been invaluable. He has been a big supporter of recycling efforts and served for many years on numerous regional committees pertaining to transportation, recycling, and solid waste. For anyone who has been interviewed by Joe for a town position, the first and foremost question he would ask was, why Tilton? He has always sought the best and brightest that fit seamlessly within our community. We will always fondly remember his unique and often humorous motions to adjourn each Selectment's meeting, which always brought a smile to everyone's face. Joe has been particularly proud of the moniker of being champion Christmas cookie contest winner. But that designation is still being debated, as yours truly is claimed to tie him in that category. To say that he is leaving big shoes to fill, which I hereby and forever declare as an understatement, we recognize his contributions by presenting him with a very special pair of motorcycle boots.
No shit.
And town jacket, which we always see him wearing, the missing rides around town. Thank you, Joe, for your commitment and leadership and dedication to making the town a great place to live and work.
Most of you don't understand what this means to me. Ten years ago, we used to have a motorcycle. Here at the Police Department.
Police Department.
And this pair of motorcycle boots, like, almost eight hundred dollars of taxpayer money. I literally live it. I'm still living. And I kept bringing it up, bringing it up, bringing it up. And now they found, and nobody ever wore them. Now they found them.
So the story behind that is they only fit one person, and that person left.
So the moral of that story is Chief Gilman will not have any motorcycle in police officers. It's fixed on boots.
Or like the gloves. Do this real quick so we can move on. I have a lawn to mow. Congratulations on your retirement. It's all stuck together, and I'm not sure... Oh, there we go. Oh, nice. From everybody in town hall. I thank you ever so much. Honor and privilege to be able to sit up here on this side of the table. And I suggest it would hurt.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Mitchell, if you could go to slide two. I'll turn it over to Kim Souls. And just as a writer, we'll use this as a warning when you're speaking, so you don't have to track your own time. So Mr. Mitchell will give you a little free fifteen-second warning, and then let you know when you hit that two-minute mark. And I'll try to be as fair as possible, and Mark's pointing Mr. O'Leary. If you want to come back up there and speak again, we'll do that a few times, but not relentlessly. Okay. Mr. Mitchell, on to slide two. Turn it over to Kim Souls to talk about our voter turnout on Tuesday. Good morning.
Starting at the upper left, Selectmen for two-year. John Hanson, one hundred forty-eight votes, undervotes thirty-one, write-ins five. The second one is actually Selectmen for three years, and that would be Eric Adams, one forty-eight, undervotes thirty-one, write-ins five. Budget Committee. Christine Dabbitsky, one hundred fifty-one votes, undervotes two oh seven, write-ins ten. Budget Committee Logroom, no valid candidate, undervotes one sixty-six, write-ins eighteen. Treasurer. Sandra Hyslock, one fifty-seven, undervotes twenty-six, and write-ins one. Seward Commissioner, Jason Wright, one forty-eight, undervotes thirty-three, and write-ins one, three. Trustee of the Trust Fund. Greg DeBolder, one forty-nine, undervotes thirty-four, write-ins one. Checklist at the Supervisor, no valid candidate, undervotes six, one sixty-five, write-ins nineteen. We had seven write-ins for Bev Lerner, who was appointed. He has now been elected to Supervisor of the Checklist.
All right. We had several other planning amendment amendments that were on the ballot. So we'll go to the next slide, so you can see how those votes were processed. So for Amendment Two, there were one hundred and eight yeses, sixty-four nos, twelve undervotes. If you're wondering what an undervote is, anybody wondering what an undervote is? Right here? This is really exciting news. When you choose not to vote, so some people say, if I don't want to pick a candidate, can I just leave it blank? When you choose not to vote, we'll pick a candidate that counts as one undervote. So if there's a pick-two, and you choose not to pick anyone, that's two undervotes. And then if you circle two dots, that's called an overvote, because we don't know what you voted for. Luckily, this last election, nobody voted for him. So undervotes twelve. We can go to the next slide. That amendment is one hundred twenty-one yeses, fifty nos, thirteen undervotes. Next slide. Amendment number three, one hundred twenty yeses, fifty-three nos, eleven undervotes. And Amendment Four, one hundred twelve yeses, sixty nos, and twelve undervotes. So that was voter turnout for Tuesday. They all passed in the affirmative. Just going to double-check on one item. They did all pass in the affirmative. All right. Moving on to Article Three. Mr. Mitchell is so prepared. I'm going to read Article Three. Prepare and reconstruction of Academy Street Retaining Wall to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of reconstructing Academy Street and the retaining wall, and to authorize issuance of not more than four hundred and fifty thousand of bonds or notes and of provisions of Municipal Finance Act RSA Thirty-Three, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes to determine the rate of interest thereof. This article is recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a three-fifths ballot vote is required. So again, this is going to be a ballot vote. Once we've discussed this, get a motion on the floor, and we will go up to the checklist, get a ballot, we'll mark it, we'll put it in the ballot logs, and return. So after reading that, do I have a motion?
Add a moderator.
Yes. Recognize Joe Jessman. Is there a second? Properly motion and seconded, is there discussion? Go ahead.
Okay. All right. You can hear me now. I don't know if most of you know where Academy Street is, but it runs from Prospect to School Street, right behind the fire department downtown. There's a large retaining wall made up of large, non-conforming rocks. I don't know who designed it. There's rocks now falling out of the wall. And one of them is within six inches of the water department shed. Luckily, it didn't hit it. Okay. Let me... All right. The Tilton Northfield Fire and Water District owns some of the land where the wall is located. That would require an easement to repair the wall. The Board of Selectmen have been working with the district for several years to work out an agreement on terms and conditions, and I think we're close. An engineering study was conducted by Vic Farland Johnson to determine how best to rebuild the wall and resurface the road. Their estimate of the project cost is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars at the time of the study. The cost of this anticipated borrowing is estimated to be five cents on a tax rate, five dollars for a hundred thousand dollars worth of valuation. The bond estimate is based on four hundred and fifty thousand borrowed over ten years at a tax exempt rate of ninety-five percent. Rates fluctuate depending on the interest rate part at the time of the borrowing. If approved, and work is done in 2025, the first payment of approximately fifty thousand dollars will be in 2026. So what are the options for Academy Street? We can do nothing. Right now, the road is closed just toward the Water District end of the road, so that people on that street can get in and out. But it's not a thorough street at this point. And we could just leave it that way, you know? But that's not a good option, I don't think, because the rock run is already falling down into Water District's property, and gravity always swings. So those rocks are continuing to tumble. We have a report, one of those GTR, ground penetrating radar things, that indicates voids under the road. I don't know what that means, so we didn't dig down. But if you look in the side, it's still with big rocks. And apparently, they put out a bunch of big rocks, and then pour sand on top of it, so that you can see where the sand is coming out of the wall. So we could approve the bond to repair the wall and resurface the street. It goes to a regular open road at that point. Or we can appropriate extra money every year to go into roads, bridges, and Capital Reserve Fund, so that in five, six years, seven years, we have enough money to do it. So I think that's a fair overview, Madam Moderator, and I would certainly love to hear what you think.
Excellent. Thank you. Recognizing the second mic.
Jason Wright, West End Street. Couple of things, questions and clarifications. My understanding is that Academy Street does not terminate at Prospect. It actually runs when the convenience store merges with Chestnut, goes back out to Route Three. So I think that's the total inclusive linear footage. My question is, how many linear feet are we looking to resurface on Academy? How far down from school to Chestnut, as it were? That's one question. Second is, it was mentioned at the end of Selectment Jessman's comment about appropriation into the roads. I mean, my understanding is that this road was slated for resurfacing several years ago, such that the sewer commission actually ran an effective repair to their pipes at the furthest deep of the trench. So the money that's already been appropriated for that road, that, I think it was on Kevin's watch, how much of that money is ready to go for Academy? How many linear feet? Those are basic questions.
Thank you. Hold on, Mr. Jessman. So how many linear feet of the Academy Street roadway is, the question was specific to Chestnut Street? Does this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars cut? One hundred and fifty feet?
One hundred and fifty linear feet.
Thank you. Does it, from the start of the road at School Street?
Mr. Pearson has more of those specifics than I do.
So who am I recognizing? Mr. Hilliard or Mr. Pearson? Mr. Hilliard, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jason is right. Academy Street does cut across behind the store as well. So where, for our voters' sake, where the old post office, the end of the old post office and the walking trail that went out to Main Street from Tilton School, that section is currently closed. So any residential people that reside on that street from, that's actually the last house is right there. So they have an extra parking spot now because the road's closed.
I'm left, actually, unclear as the moderator. I'm hearing one hundred and fifty feet from the start of Academy on the School Street side is the repair moving forward?
I'm sorry. I thought the question was, does Academy Street continue? The distance of the wall repair is a total of one hundred and fifty feet and begins at the end of that walking trail that I just explained, and works back towards School Street, one hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. Thank you. The second portion of the question is the money that was set aside in the Roads, Bridges, Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund for this repair. Is there money available that will reduce this or augment this?
So the short answer is, there is money in the Capital Reserve Fund, but not earmarked specifically for Academy Street. When the project was delayed for several reasons, the agreement with the Water District and other work that needed to be done, that the money that was originally going to be used for that was reprioritized to a... was reprioritized to other projects that came up first. So until such time, Academy Street can be done. So there is, there will be some money available to apply, and that's part of the, how would be the contingency. So there is twenty thousand dollars in this bond article for contingency, which represents five percent, but anything over that would have to be, would have to come out of the Capital Reserve Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I'm gonna recognize Mr. Larry first. Go ahead, Steve.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Larry, I live at one seventy-two School Street. I'm in favor of this project, but I'm not in favor of the amount that is possible. I've looked at the engineering report that the selectmen had given me, and there's a lot of variance that I'm concerned about. There's thirteen thousand dollars for putting up a changeable sign on this project, plus this eighty thousand dollars, oh, excuse me, eight thousand dollars for flags. And if the road is closed, why do we need flags? And look at like this, concrete barriers, the Jersey barriers. Doesn't the town own some of those? Because that's another two thousand dollars that... It comes up to be almost twenty thousand dollars in that report, that we could put that money somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
I do have another question. Mr. Jessman made a good presentation about this, but they forgot one thing. The town liability, that water main. If nothing gets done, the town is liable. This is what was said at the upper carrying of this warrant article for the second. If that's true, if that water main breaks before the construction starts, is the town willing to put every resident on School Street, open road, circle, drive into a hotel because we have low water? And we don't know how long it's gonna be? That is a true fact. You guys are liable for that. And for all the damages, all that water goes down into the Fire District also. Okay, someone answer that question for me.
Thank you, Mr. Larry. So I have three points of financial inquiry you've made, which is the changeable sign, the cost of the flaggers, and the Jersey barriers. Someone want to answer the need for those? Mr. Hilliard, I'll recognize you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. And Steve is exactly right. When we get the, when we got the engineering proposal, they built that stuff in automatically. That is caught by people like myself and a very capable financial expert here beside me, Tim. So those are all things that we will negotiate. What we give you is an amount not to exceed, and as Tim's have built in, the five percent variance in there for any overrides or any... But we will, in fact, negotiate all of that stuff. Steve is exactly right, we won't need flags. He's right, we won't need purchase or lease concrete barriers, because we have those in our very capable highway department. We'll address those as well. So any of those things that we can handle ourselves, we will handle, and all that cost savings will be reported back to you, the voters, when the project is completed.
Thank you. I'll turn to the mic one, please state your name.
Nathan Langione, Nate Winifield Street. So I am very much in support of this article, primarily due to the liability issues, due to the fact that there is a sewer main on the upside of the road, water main in the middle, and if the wall were to fail, there would be multiple times the replacement and repair cost of the road if all of that water went into the Water District property and then went downhill into Main Street, into the basements of those historic buildings. If the Water District property is impacted enough, it might prevent the ability to make repairs, you know, to resolve the situation, you know, confer additional costs if residents don't have water and have to be put up in hotels. So I think this is a very cost-effective solution to afford future liability, but it also gives us the ability to utilize Main Street for town events and have a way for traffic to bypass Main Street if there's an accident or some other type of emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize second mic.
Jason, right, West End. I do recognize Mr. Langione's testimony. I do understand he's also an employee or a district or a clerk or a paid spokesman.
Mr. Ray, remember, we're being respectful.
Absolutely. And I do respect his concerns, and I will want to offer rebuttal testimony regarding the sewer line, which was repaired in place with a non-invasive trenchless procedure at the time that the road was being proposed for repair. So as a sewer commission, I won't speak for the board, but I will say that sewer line from School down through more of Academy is actually being impacted, is already being taken care of. So that's all I can offer, is that sewer should not be concerning. Just want to go there.
I appreciate that, and so does the rest of the audience. Mr. Larry?
My head, nobody answered the question about liability. I define of the town, are they going to be liable for this issue if it hasn't been resolved?
Thank you for bringing that back up. Does someone speak to the liability of the project? If it's not done and it impacts those on the roadway or, as some other testimonies talk about, Main Street?
I apologize, Steve, I did mean to answer your second question, I just didn't remember. Yes, the town is liable. In any event, if people couldn't, didn't have water and couldn't reset it in their home, unfortunately, we would have to make that right, and hoteling it would probably be the thing that would be done. The important part, Madam Moderator, if I might say, is that Nate spoke well to it, Nate Langione, in support. I would bring this to you because it's very important. We don't want to expose ourselves to liability. We want to fix it and fix it right. And I do believe some of our residents and folks on Academy Street would like to see that road reopened.
Mr. Hilliard, Mr. Pearson would like to make a comment regarding liabilities, that question.
Correct. So the more, the location of the water main, as I understand it from the superhead of the Water District, is such that it is not in present danger at this moment, the more likely liability that we would face is damage to the Water District's buildings because of where the outer wall is collapsing. As evidenced by, if you can see in that photo, there are boulders that had held up the wall that had come down very close to their facility. So that's the more present liability. Both the Water District and the town of Tilton are members of the public risk pool through Primex, where we both have insurance. And one of the, one of the issues that was referenced earlier is an agreement between the Water District and the town of Tilton regarding indemnification and property liability. So that's just about been worked out, but the more, the more present risk of liability is the building, less so for the water main.
Seeing no further individuals at the mic, this, or spontaneously standing up, selectmen, I will refer to selectmen's call.
So this is a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond article. So the reason why we have to bring it now is because if we get the final engineering numbers, which would be less the barriers, the flag people, and all that, we wouldn't be able to enter into it this year. We'd have to bring it back next year, and by then, construction costs go up again. So if we put in the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars now, that's the maximum amount that we would spend, we can move forward to get it done this year.
Go ahead, Mr. Damon. announce your name and where you live.
My name is Trupal Tom, Tilton. May they do a fortune, I'd like to know me. But I'd like to add, why in this warrant article isn't worded that all unused funds can be returned to the town? So if you have, if you spend four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, that's a thousand dollars that comes to the town, but it isn't worded here. I'd like to know the reason why that's not there. The other question that I have is that this was, this money was already appropriated, was used for other things. Now we're re-appropriating the same amount of money for, again, what's actually costing the town double. Thank you.
Thank you. So two questions. Why doesn't Article Three reference amounts not up to four fifty returning to the tax rules or unused funds? And again, the question, I think, was answered. If there's any more information regarding the adjustment of priorities.
The amount of the bond that's up to that amount, we don't bond any more than we have estimates and receipts for. If it costs four hundred and five thousand dollars, that's how much we bond. There's no extra money that goes into the general fund or anything like that. The only bond worth much money is we actually need for the project.
What's the other part? Second question was back to the previous Roads, Bridges, Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund having some money set aside for this project historically, and again, why were other projects reprioritized over this one?
Because we couldn't make the arrangements with the water company to dig it up. We have to have right-of-ways and easements, and we can't go forward unless we can go forward, kind of, Tom. That's why. And so it was that instead of raising separate money for some of these other projects, we used that money, which was in Roads and Bridges, which wasn't specifically earmarked necessarily for Academy Street, like this particular warrant article here, would specifically put this money for Academy Street. That's why. And I don't know how much is in there right now, but yeah, that turns out there's thirty, forty thousand dollars or whatever that we can use. That just lowers the amount of the bond.
Thank you, Mr. Jessman. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Paula Hubbs-Bolton, and I live at twenty-eight Cross Mission. I'm sorry, I'm new to this, but I just have a question, two questions. One, how come you're allowed to re-appropriate bonds without another vote? Like, don't you have to vote, like, we're voting on this project? If it's a different project, don't you have to get approval from the town for that? Like, where does the money, where did the money go? And second of all, do you have to get more than one, like, who is this person charging this much money? Do you have to get more than one, what am I going to say? Yes, like, so how do we, like, this seems like, just to me, it seems like a private for what this is, but what I know. But do you have to get more than one? And again, it's money. Like, how do we know what that money went to that we, people already, they don't... I mean, people already approved and gave you, you know, like, where is there, where is, where can we get a receipt of that money that was already spent?
Okay, two questions. For money that was in the Roads, Bridges, Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund, do you have a list of projects that were funded through that fund available to the taxpayers?
Of course.
Is that available, that we can discuss?
It's all public information. Get in touch with town hall, and I'm sure they'll be glad to get you that info. It's on the website, you go to tiltonrancher.org.
I can see that.
Yeah. Go to the town website. It's a wealth of information about past projects, future projects, dog licensing, whatever questions that you might have.
Thank you.
As far as the, the money goes into that fund to be used, the selectmen are agents of the fund. Let's say we're going to repave one of the, Grant Street. We're gonna be putting a new top coat on Grant Street this spring. And we don't need to come back to the legislative fund because we already have permission, because the money is there, and we are agents of the fund. If you have a question, can we, selectmen, the town administration, they'd be glad to help you out? No doubt.
Thank you, Mr. Jessman. With regard to the bidding process question, are you putting this out to bid? I need someone to raise their hand if they're able to answer that question. Mr. Jessman?
As far as I know, the bid still goes out to bid. We have sent this out to numerous companies, and we've gotten limited replies back. It's a hundred and fifty feet of wall, so most of the big giant guys, they don't want to send people out for a hundred and fifty foot of wall.
So the short answer, Mr. Jessman, is that it went out to competitive bidding? Yes, thank you. All right. Anyone else want to speak to Article Three before I reread it? I'm going to reread Article Three, reminding you that this is a ballot vote. Okay. Article Three, repair and reconstruction of Academy Street and retaining wall. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of reconstructing Academy Street and the retaining wall, and to authorize the issuance of not more than four hundred and fifty thousand of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act RSA thirty-three, and to authorize the board of selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee, and a three-fifths ballot vote is required. Mr. Ray?
I can move the question.
Thank you. Go ahead, the second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hardy. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, say no. All right. Let's begin the ballot voting process. Please proceed to the checklist and get your voter cards punched, and the ballot box is in the corner. Fold your, fold once before you put it on ballot box, Mr. Larry.
One hour? Time limit for the ballot?
I, well, it's one hour, always one hour. Thank you. Please remember you have to hand your folded vote to the assistant moderators so we can ensure it's one vote per person, and they will put it in the box at your visual attention.
I'm no, and I, it's like making me not be able to vote.
I'm no, and I, it's like making me not be able to think, so.
Good luck to him, good luck. Can't wait to get my bike out now.
Just want to make an announcement. We can keep going, we're going to leave the levoting process open for the official one hour, starting at 8:50, at 9:50. We'll pull the ballots in capital, but we can move on to the other articles of the board. So just give you a couple of minutes to get back to your seats, in case you don't have a laptop. If I can have the selectmen return to the table. Let's move on to Article 4, leaving Article 3, open for an hour. Everybody ready? Okay, so we have a motion out on the floor to move Article 12 out of order and proceed with that next, is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have a second? A second? All those in favor of adjusting the order to take Article 12 next, say yea?
Yea!
Any opposed, say no? I am in doubt, I need my assistant moderators. You're going to hold your voter card up when I go through motions again. Sometimes it's just the tone of your nose that growl high gears on. All right. All those in favor say yea and hold your card up, please.
Yea!
All the nodes, hold your card up. Okay, you just have good, strong voices. So by affirmative vote, we're moving to Article 12. Let me read Article 12. Article 12, To Modify the Elderly Exemption. Shall the town modify the provision of RSA 72:39-A for elderly exemption of property tax in the town until, based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be as follows: For a person 65 years of age up to 75 years of age, $65,000. For a person 75 years of age up to 80 years, $95,000. For a person 80 years of age or older, $140,000. To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least three consecutive years, owned no real estate individually or break, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married to each other for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $28,000, or if married, a combined net income of not more than $40,000, and own net assets not more than $70,000, excluding the value of the person's residence, which already vote required. Do I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town adopts Article 4 to cease taxes proposed.
Just a simple clarification, you mean Article 12? Are you modifying your motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town adopts Article 12.
Do I have a second? Discussion on the motion, please.
The elderly exemption is designed to protect elderly residents living on limited income to continue to live in their homes. While property values have been more than volatile in recent years, the exemptions have not kept up with providing help to our seniors. The 2020 revow disproportionately taxed people with less expensive properties that were the highest in demand in the past few years. Property values doubled and tripled in this segment. An unintended consequence was that many of the residents of these properties were senior citizens who, without a corresponding increase in elderly exemptions, were subject to big tax increases and undue financial pressure. Passage of this article will cost about $5,000 based on the property valuations, but we have no knowledge of the income levels and who will now qualify, who did not in the past. Increasing the income levels will most certainly qualify more people for the exemption, but we have no idea, no way of knowing to what extent.
Article 10 reminds us to hold on. I would like to make an amendment to this article, if possible. And I have it here, and the amendment agreed in the last three sentences. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $35,000, if married, and combined net income of not more than $50,000, and own net assets of not more than $80,000, excluding the value of the person's residence. And the reason is...
Hold on before you speak to that, is there a second on this amendment? Second by Billy Lawrence, I'm going to just take that, I'm going to make sure it's signed. And now may I speak to your motion?
Yeah, Pat, I hit it pretty much on the button. She said is, with the increasing of everything, the assessed valuation of the town went from $639 million to, let's put it in millions, to $1,078 million, which is $1,780,000. So that's an increase of 40%, roughly, take a little bit. But some of the increases in the valuations have doubled, which is hurting the elderly people in this town who want to stay in this town. So that is the reason why I put in this amendment, to help the elderly.
Go ahead, Billy.
Test, Bill R. sir. I'm just curious if maybe Chandler might have any information on the change in valuation of the residential property in the last few years? And that's what we're talking about, is that the residential property is really exploding. And in fact, to the point where some of the commercial businesses are getting tax rebates. But I would just wonder if you have any information that sort of backs up what he's saying about increasing the amount because it's a more of a problem.
Thank you, Billy. Mr. Pearson, or anyone able to answer that question?
Well, so let me just say that I think we've all seen that the residential market, just to echo everything that's already been said, has been very active. And at one point, maybe a bubble of some kind, there was very little supply and a lot of demand. And as a result, as a result of the supply and demand issues, particular segments of the real estate market went up a lot. And when they go up a lot, the law in New Hampshire for property taxation, which is the principal source of taxation in New Hampshire, is based off of market value. And unfortunately, that burdened this particular segment of housing, and as a result, you know, many of the residents are senior citizens in these housing. So in terms of where we stand within Belknap County, we, the proposed $35,000, $50,000, and $80,000 amounts in this amendment, currently, in Belknap County, the most recent data that we have for single, the range was 20,000 to 30,000, married was 30,000 to 45,000, and then total assets excluding the person's residence is 50,000 to 150,000 within the 13 or so communities within Belknap County. So just something to keep in mind as you consider this. And again, we have a current set of elderly exemptions that we know based on the, based on the data that we have and are currently applying. We know that there's a cost that will be about $5,000 based on the proposed warrant article. We know that there's a cost that will be about $5,000 based on the proposed article. But we have no way of knowing what people's incomes are and who would then be eligible based on the new higher income limits. So when, as those people qualify for that, the cost is then spread out throughout the town to the people that do not qualify for that.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Anyone else want to speak to the amendment? Pat, I'll stick to you.
I'd just like to add to what Tim has said. This year, when we did the reevaluation, what was hit most because of the market value of what was being sold prior to that in the last five years was multifamily homes and manufactured homes, which meant that people in our manufactured home parks doubled and tripled their assessment. And that's someone with a $117,000 assessment last year was upwards of $254,000 assessment this year. And that's what we're talking about, that realistically, that's where they are. And 80% of our manufactured homes are housed by seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David.
Tom David, Kefalos. Out of 15 to 16 months ago, came before the board of selectmen and asking them to raise the limits on this study, elderly exemptions. At the town meeting last year, they chose to raise them for veterans, which I spoke in favor of. I'm in favor of this amendment, as Mr. Keen has proposed. But in some towns, I have the list of homes of whom their income limits are. And in some towns, the income limit is much, much higher, much, much higher than it is here. And I understand that if we get exemptions for the elderly, you're going to be losing revenue. But I think we can, I think we can handle that. The other thing too is, I want to talk about two people approached me. One was in tears, lady. We had to sell her a trailer that she lived in for 25 years because of taxes doubled. And I was always of the impression that when you live in a trailer, the value of the trailer decreases, it doesn't increase. And so I'm confused about that. The other person that came to me sent you in to pay your taxes, and she complained about the high taxes. And somebody said to her, well, if you don't like it, leave. Now, this is muck and wine. We want people to stay here. We want citizens to stay and seniors to stay in their homes. We don't want people to have to force them out of this town. That's ridiculous. It's a ridiculous thing to say. I've been in this town a few years, and I've grown to love this place. I want to stay here forever. I want to be, I want to be injured here. This is, this is a great place. I love it. But you've got to make it easier for seniors to stay here. Where are we going to go? I mean, we sell our house, where are we going to go? It's just crazy. So I'm in favor of the amendment as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. Does anyone else want to speak on the amendment?
Amy, my dear Amy, eight minutes free. My question is this one. Why do you have to be a resident for only three consecutive years? Because I would think if this is about protecting the elderly, protecting, you know, New Hampshire residents, town residents, I would think most elderly would be here for more than three years. And then this could be something that just allows people from out of state to accrue to Hampshire and stop paying taxes. Just a couple of years.
Thank you for that question. I heard it from four people at the table while you were talking. It's embedded within RSA 72:39-A, so it's a basis in the law, a foundation there. So if it's something you wanted to change in the system, you'd have to look at the legislature to adjust that. Any other individual want to speak on the amendment? So we're speaking on the duly processed, proposed amendment. The amounts proposed are in wed, next to the original amount. If there's no one else who wants to speak, then we're going to take a vote on adopting the amendment. Do you want me to read the whole article or just the change? I'm just going to read the change. So the change proposed is, in the last sentence, "In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $35,000, if married, a combined net income of not more than $50,000, and own net assets not more than $80,000 excluding the value of the person's residence. Majority vote required." If you're voting yea, you're in favor of the amendment. If you're voting no, you're not in favor of the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, say no. Then the amendment passes as a declared. I would use that yea. All right. So back to Article 12 as amendment. Does anyone else want to speak that has not already spoken on Article 12 as amendment? Does anyone want to call the question?
Call the question.
Steve, will you call the question? I'm going to call, Chuck is the second. All right. All in favor of calling the question, say yea.
Yea.
Anybody no? All right. Let's talk about Article 12. I'm going to read Article 12. Modify elderly exemption. Shall the town modify the provisions of RSA 72:39-A for the elderly exemption from property tax in the town until based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be as follows: For a person 65 years of age up to 75 years of age, $65,000; For a person 75 years of age up to 80 years, $95,000; For a person 80 years of age or older, $140,000. To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least three consecutive years, owned no real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by the such person's spouse, they must have been married to each other for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $35,000, if married, a combined net income of not more than $50,000, and own net assets not more than $80,000 excluding the value of the person's residence. Majority vote required. All in favor of Article 12, say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, say no. Article 12 passes as amendment. Now I will go back to Article 4. Article 4, operating budget. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate, the budget committee recommended sum of $7,99,408 for the general municipal operations. The recommended amount do not include special or individual or articles addressed separately. This article is recommended by the selectmen for $7,72,555 and recommended by the budget committee for $7,99,448. A majority vote is required. Do I have a motion? Billy Lawrence moves Article 4 to be passed. Do I have a second? Jerry is the second. Mr. Lawrence, if you'll speak to your motion.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for everybody coming here. Should bring some of your neighbors too, so this is a great democracy action. Anyway, we've got a great budget committee. I think the overall increase is 2.3%. You know, around inflation. And that includes a lot of wage, you know, run rate wage increases. This budget is about 30% of your tax dollar. Of this budget, about 63% is wage-related money. Also, other things that are affecting your tax dollars is that the fire district is up 25%. The county budget is up 21%. The school, though, is flat. Other areas of interest, mobile areas of increase. And I just want to thank Tim Pearson. He's been super with the committee, very transparent in all of our figures. He just knows where every bill is going. And that's how he does a great deal in making these decisions. So increases, there's an increase of $206,995 in the police budget, which reflects the second year of collective bargaining agreement and experienced staffing hires. There's an increase of $15,842 in outside agencies. Police assistance increased $14,742 due to a loss of grant funding. The Twin Rivers Food Country increased $1,100, just mainly because of the conditions out there. And yeah, based on the services provided to the community. There's an increase of $10,339 in the land use due to reorganized positions and additional anticipated legal and professional expenses. Middle areas of decrease. The budget reduction overall of $44,415 in sanitation is due partly to reduced recycling and operating expenses and reduced solid waste hauler activity. Budget reduction overall of $25,605. I hope that works due to new staffing and projects that are budgeted for everybody here as well as some recovery monies from 2024 for 2025 paving work which are Morrison and Grant Streets. A budget reduction of $16,340 in long-term debt due to amortization schedules. A budget reduction of $14,794 in finance, property management circumference for odd work, product for moving interest expense not used in 2024 as there was no grants funding needed for the Tilton Avenue Bridge or Camphor Road. Is there anything that any members would like to address? So take any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have anything for Article 4? Chairman, I'll stick to you.
Madam. First of all, I'd like to commend the budget committee. This is an awesome budget. After the public hearing, we were notified that we were being sued. So I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 4 to increase line 4153.910 by 20,000 for a line total of $45,000 and therefore increase the total budget to $7,199,449. That's our legal line.
So before we speak to, is there a second? Second by Jerry. I can speak to your amendment, please.
Oh, we're being sued for zoning issues.
I'm going to amend. So the amendment is to make a motion to increase line 4153.910 by 20,000 for a line total of $45,000, thereby increasing the total budget to $7,199,449. Does anyone else want to comment on the amendment? Mr. Gray.
Jason, I'm West King Street. I'll limit my testimony to the amendment. With a budget of, what is actually, without the sewer pass through, of $6,917 of the total tax, I would like to think, as I've heard the expression before, there must be a way to find $20,000 lurking within $6.1 million. So that's my testimony to the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. We're going to take each amendment one at a time. This amendment would raise the total tax rule by $20,000, specifically allocating it into like associated legal fees. A vote in favor would pass this amendment, we would say yea. A vote against would decline this amendment, we would continue to talk about the budget and the other amendments. All in favor of the proposed amendment to increase the legal line by $20,000, say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. I'd like to do this with my assistant moderators. All those who vote yea will raise their card when I call it. All those who voted no will raise their card when I call it, please. All in favor, say yea. Can you lift your cards, please? Please put your cards down. All, all those who know not to adopt the amendment, please put your cards up. 26 noes, 19 yeses, the amendment fails. Any other business associated with the upper budget, including any other amendments? Please state your amendment address.
Michelle, Deere Street, Tillingham. I would like to make a motion to amend line number 4550.932, Hall Memorial Library, to increase the budget by $19,157 to $173,000.
Is there a second on the amendment? Your name, please. Brittany? Shannon, thank you for the record as a second. Ms. Vanderpoel, please speak to your motion.
I respectfully believe that the budget committee does not will comprehend the extent of our library's operations as well as the significant contributions to the residents of Tillingham and the work.
Ms. Vanderpoel, I think you should just talk a little bit longer. Thank you.
The Hall Memorial Library is more than just the books on the shelves. It's a community gathering place. This library area makes lots of information available online. The library offers someone to point in the right direction and offer the resources you need to not get lost online. You can download books online from anywhere, but the library curates a book collection online so that you're getting access to good embedded books and not AI published titles. Another huge aspect of what the Hall Memorial Library offers and can provide online is the human connection. The adult book clubs alone, which there are at least five, have members with an age range between their twenties and well into their nineties. I treasure the friendships that I've made in these groups. The children's storytimes and programs provide connections both with the children and their parents and caregivers. When I first moved to the area over 20 years ago, these were the first connections I had to other adults in the area, and I still treasure those friendships that I made. One thing that I hear also from many seniors in the groups that I'm in is that the book groups, the crafts, the programs, and other things offered by the library start off by giving them a reason to leave the house, especially if they've been recently in their widow. It provides that human connection which is so often missing in our lives. I could go on and on about the benefits of all the programs and clubs for adults, teens, and kids that are offered, but to appreciate all the library has to offer, you really have to experience it for yourself. I'm quoting our library director, what you share here, because I cannot have said it any better. We believe that investing in the Hall Memorial Library represents the wisest and cost-effective investment in the future of our community. My fostering literacy creativity and lifelong learning would contribute significantly to the well-being and growth of Tillingham and its residents.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderpoel. Okay, we're speaking on the motion right now to increase the Hall Memorial Library by $19,157,000. Please go ahead.
Nathan Lynch, Cheney, Main Street. I believe that the town library is probably the best service that the town of Tilton provides, being at least the one service that can be utilized by all town residents. Besides it being a library providing educational opportunities, I think the biggest thing it provides is a warming station for people who lose heat, can't get their homes internet access, electricity and access. We don't have any other free access for our spaces like that.
Mr. Lee, you're just wondering if you're speaking in favor of the amendment?
Yes, sorry, I am in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, the patient, I'm going to go in first and then I'll go in second.
Yeah, my question is, I understand all the wonderful services that the library performs, but when someone has an amendment, I'm expecting them to speak to why they need to have the additional funds. And I can die here and explanation as to why we need close to another twenty thousand. Thank you.
Before I ask Ms. Vanderpoel back up, I'm going to do the second one.
I'm Adam Snow, Timberland Drive, Tilton. And I support the amendment because we're discussing all the logistics and important physical things we have to take care of. The library is the heart of our community and it serves a very purpose. And I'm one of those people in the book club who go because of the atmosphere there. And we're losing librarians because we don't pay them enough. That's my understanding why we need to increase the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, before you speak, Ms. Vanderpoel, has any additional information of what the nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars is proposed for?
Yes, thank you. I hadn't thought about that before, I'm a tiny man. Part of that is standard cost of living increase for our staff. Four percent cost of living increase. Last various project increase we had was to cover multiple years without raises. This is simply for a cost of living increase. And also building and grounds maintenance. This historic building is old, it's getting older and for many years, a lot of things weren't addressed that we've been trying to catch up with. So, you know, the library is something responsible for the cost of the upkeep of this building and everything is increasing, there are cost increases. So that's also a, a increase as well.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderpoel. Mr. Wright, thank you for your vision. Your next.
Thank you, Madam Maura. Looking at the budget line, it appears that the request for the Budget Committee's number is actually a level fund to last year's number. My understanding of last year's group number was due to an increase that was requested here on the legislative floor because the library request is not fully met. So I'm looking at 2024's appropriation. My understanding that there was a big increase that got approved on the fly at town meeting and that the request this year is simply to level fund that. And I get that there was conversation on last year's wages for the living wage. I don't, and then I see here an increase of twelve percent when I don't believe that's a cost of living increase of twelve percent. I think there's one thing's in there. Regarding maintenance, the building sits on a very small parcel and I think that some of the folks that are very passionate about it, they want to break the yard, they want to come out and have some volunteerism, do a little cleanup outside, things like that. That's where community is built, is getting together, not just for the, what can I do for me? It's what can I do for the building and for the space and the environment? So the library is a nice resource, it has a following and those folks can roll their sleeves up and contribute to some of the hands-on stuff. But I don't think twelve percent over last year's number, last year's number is a really sharp increase to get some salaries currently.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Northfield.
Ken Norton, East Main Street. Point of information, two questions. One, does the Budget Committee coordinate with Northfield regarding funding for the library? And two, can anybody speak to what Northfield has in their proposed budget for funding for the library? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Someone from the Budget Committee answered the question about coordinating with Northfield and what Northfield has contributed for the Hall Memorial Library. Mr. Lawrence, at the beginning, they have not discussed that line with Northfield. Go ahead, state your name in here.
Brittany Shannon, Doris Ann and Tilton. Northfield Budget Committee fully funded us this year. I don't ask the amount.
Shannon, do you happen to know what that amount was?
Yes.
It's okay if you don't.
One hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and five.
The ask of Northfield was one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and five. And Northfield in their proposed budget has pulled under that one.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the amendment? Okay. I'm going to read the amendment and then I'll take a vote on it. Please state your nickname, your address.
Hannah Kane, School Street, Skitteton. Just wanted to say we have other things about building and maintenance budget. The twelve percent is, we have four percent for a cost of living increase and the other equal four percent is for building maintenance. Last year, we went over our building maintenance budget quite a bit because these are, the building is almost a hundred and fifty years old. There's a lot of things that we can't fix on our own that we can't. We can do things outside, like do stuff like that, but there's not internal issues that cannot be fixed from us. We do the best that we can with plumbing and things like that. But when it comes to the eight percent and these records and the sewer and all that stuff, we can't do that on our own. We need a budget order that keeps our building going.
Thank you. She pointed out that there are things that they cannot fix on their own, such as they are not HVAC mechanicals, nor are the plumbers in the buildings a hundred and fifty years old. And she informed that certainly volunteerism could wait and do other things outdoor with it. They're still being built. Mr. Lawrence, would you like to speak?
For the Budget Committee.
Thank you.
I mean, they've had a couple of years of pretty good increases to wages and I've looked at other libraries in the area. Our library budget is bigger than Franklin and as bigger than Belmont, I believe. And also, we are encouraging them, which I think they're worth it on us, is getting grants. Because most every library gets grants to help pay for their costs. So that's sort of why we were at this point. We felt that they've had some pretty good increases. They're actually, I think you're down, of course, from last year by, you have nine this year, ten last year.
Mr. Lawrence, do you have a question you want to ask to the moderator? So you're asking about staffing? If you have any questions, let's direct it to her. Do you need a moderator back up?
Sure. Well, I believe from the form that they gave us, they had ten people working last year and they have nine people there this year. So that's another reason. But we go basically, we compare other institutions that are similar and we know that libraries are very vital to the community and they also have to reinvent themselves in some ways because of the modern society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. If there's anyone in the audience that can actually answer the question of whether there are ten funded staff or nine funded staff, please feel free to do so, but if you do not have that information, you do not have to attempt to answer that question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Brittany Shannon, again, four percent. We did have ten last year. That was, we had three high school pages last year and lost one of our high school pages for approximately six hours a week.
Thank you for that. Did you want to speak and provide any new information on the amendment?
Yes, I just want to also mention that our building and grounds maintenance which is a majority of the increase does not include plowing and sidewalk care because the town of Northfield also took that on this year. So that is less cost for both of us.
Thank you for that additional information. Does anyone else want to speak who has not spoken on the amendment? All right, with that, I'm going to read the amendment. We'll take a vote on whether the amendment passes or fails. The amendment is to see if the town will raise an appropriate. Let me back up. They'd like to make a motion to amend line number four five five zero point nine three two, Hall Memorial Library, to increase it from one hundred, fifty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars to one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and five dollars, which is an increase of nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. If you vote in favor, you're voting in favor of increasing that line of the budget by that amount. If you vote opposed, you're voting to not increase that line. All those in favor say yea?
Yea.
Any opposed say no?
No.
I believe that yea's actually had it. The motion passes. With this motion, I just want you to know that it changes the total line to seven billion, one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Looking at Mr. Pearson, see if I got that number wrong. That's correct. Are there any other motions for people who want to speak to the amended Article Four? Recognizing Mr. Scannell.
So I'm going to make a motion to add, there's a big number here, two hundred and ninety-two dollars to line four one nine five point eight zero zero.
No, because we're not done with the article yet. I, I, trust me, I have this. We're still on Article Four.
And that is?
Just letting you know, as you're not a selectman, you can't run for moderator in future. All right, back to Mr. Scannell, who is duly recognized for a motion.
This is for the purpose of purchasing cleaners for gravestones at Park Cemetery. One thinks is they're, well, that's my motion.
Thank you. Want to repeat the motion because we had a little mild interruption. The motion is to add two hundred and ninety-two dollars to the line four one nine five point eight zero zero for the purpose of purchasing cleaners for gravestones. Is there a second on the motion? Seconded by Ms. Sols. Now you may speak to your motion.
So as you know, Park Cemetery is a separate from the town. So I'm asking for that, to give them that money so that I can go down along with some helpers and clean some more of the cemetery, the gravestones that have been uncared for for many, many years. The two hundred and ninety-two dollars will buy five gallons of cleaner, which will do, I'm expecting around ten to twelve headstones that are in the worst condition that the language of deteriorating. So I ask that you can do that. I'll provide all the labor as I have.
My battery is dead?
Yeah, it is. But I'll provide all of the labor for doing that, as I have in the past. So I ask that you approve that. If anybody would like to amend that further to five hundred and eighty-four dollars, we can double the amount and stuff, try and save some of these deteriorating stones. Thank you.
So I just want to be clear that the current amendment is for two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Anyone else want to speak to the amendment or have any questions on the amendment? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Maura. My name is Tom Damon and I approve this amendment to the article. And I also like offering my services to Mr. Scannell at the time, Thompson. One quick question, what kind of chemicals do you use? Because some of it, some of it is very, very harsh. Is this organic matter or chemical matter? Thank you.
Yes, it's a very specific. It's a D2 biological solution that will not harm any plants or solutions. It actually takes a little bit of time after they clean them to make it come through. But it's nothing abrasive or it's, this is what's the only thing you can use. We also use non-statues on town. I'm a cleaning.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell.
Charles Mitchell, Caleb, Oklahoma. I'm just wondering, Mr. Scannell, whether or not you had approached the Budget Committee for this request? And if so, why did they turn it down?
Mr. Scannell, do you have a question?
No, I did not approach the Budget Committee. I looked at my personal finances and what I've been chipping in over the past few years for doing that. I kind of need a little bit of help with that, but I'll provide all the labor.
Do you have a question? Ms. Sols, do you have a question as well?
I would like, I would like to make a quick point in support of this. Having been involved in graveyards for decades since I was thirteen years old. You're talking about marble stones for the most part and marbles. If you've been and touched them, they're extremely granular. And so being exposed to the elements, it's going to start wearing away. Wearing away and breaking down. So keeping, keeping these going is important for a million different reasons. It's for family, history, genealogy. It's like an open air, graveyards to me are like open air museums where we can just see so much and I strongly support this and, and more. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott Stier.
Unlike finding twenty thousand dollars for a legal budget, I think we can find two hundred and ninety-two dollars in our budget this year without having to increase the budget. Thank you.
Please do.
Shelby Kilgus, Stowe, Tilton. I don't know how to do the more money than he mentioned, but I think it's really important. I did my own grandmother's grave down there and it's a ton of work and not everybody's able to take care of their family's gravestones. So it's a small amount of money. I would donate some of my own just to, and go give you time. But I think, I don't know how to do that though. You can mention another higher amount than it could afford.
Mr. Scannell, do you want to modify your amendment? Or withdraw your amendment? Can they show you amendment?
So if you want to sign this, that would be for amending amendment to my.
It would be more proper order if you withdrew your amendment, if you're doing, trying to take the same action and withdraw the amendment.
I'll do that at the risk of losing the whole thing, but I can miss.
So you withdraw your amendment and the second would withdraw, we would hear a new amendment?
Yes.
Who was the second on that? Do you agree on that? Okay. Okay, moderator's going to recommend it. It's John Scannell for another amendment. They anticipated this, didn't they? Mr. Scannell.
Okay, so the class is here. My motion is now to add five hundred and eighty-four dollars to line four one nine five point eight to reserve for the purpose of purchasing the cleaner for the gravestones.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Kim Sols. We've had some discussion on cleaning gravestones. Does anyone want to speak to the additional amount or anything else about the amendment? That is not very exciting.
Just an answer as to why we can't find that in the town budget for doing it. The Park Cemetery is a separate entity from the town, whereas without your permission, I can't really use the town's money for that because it's jointly funded by Northfield and Tilton. But I think we can focus on people that are founders of Tilton and veterans.
Thank you. Okay. The motion on the floor is to add five hundred and eighty-four dollars to line four one. to line 4195.800 for the purpose of purchasing cleaner for gravestones. We have a motion and a second. Are we ready? Anyone want to call a question? Calling the question by Kim, seconded by Chuck Mitchell. All those in favor of this amendment will say yea. All those opposed will say no. All in favor of the motion to add $584 to the line 4195.800 for the purpose of purchasing cleaners for gravestones, say yea.
Yea!
Any opposed, say no. Okay, the amendment passes. We have a new total budget line number. Tim wants our new number.
Oh, there we go. The new number is 7119189.
So the new bottom line number is $7,119,189, as it stands with the two passed amendments. Does anyone else, anything for Article 4 that'd like to come to the mic? Please do so then.
Red the holder, 162 on Street Street. One of the largest discrepancies in the logic between the Selectmen and the Budget Committee was the pines, $35,000 difference. I was wondering if it could be addressed by you.
Thank you, Mr. Holder. Mr. Wallace, would you like to comment?
Mr. Holder wanted a comment from the Budget Committee and the Selectmen on the major difference between the proposed funding for the pines, approximately $35,000 difference in the recommendation.
Okay, well, we just felt that it's $75,000. It's like 25% of the Pines' budget. And they do a lot of fundraising. And we feel that's an important service to our community. And in the time that it was fairly resold, money should be provided for that, that majority.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Anyone from the Selectmen want to comment?
When asked how, what percentage of Tilton residents actually used the pines, it was 26%. And that's what was the deciding vote for us.
Thank you. I do want also know it's 9:56. So Article 3 had closed at 9:50. Once we complete Article 4, we'll take a brief recess and the town will go for Article 3. Anyone else want to speak to Article 4? Are we, are we ready for a vote? Okay. Article 4, I'll read it. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, the Budget Committee recommended some, so that'd be some. It is $7,119,189. The recommended amounts do not include special or individual warrant articles, address separately. This article was previously recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. All those in favor will say yea. All of those will say no. All in favor of Article 4 as doubly amended, say yea.
Yea!
Any opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Well, Article 4 passes as amended twice. Thank you. We're going to take about five recesses to count those who voted for Article 3.
I like being on track.
From Petrie. From Petrie.
You know what's funny? When I said last year, I'm thinking of the way first, when you did just the rack of hair, and she was there with the law, and she said something. What do you think? What do you think?
They didn't even have so many good deals. But it's hard to find. They got it. It's a puppy.
We're going to resume in just a few minutes. Back to the Selectmen, back to the table, please. Okay, we can all go back to our seats. We'll close Article 3 anyway. Okay. Here we go. Article 3, vote to tally. There were 51 yes votes, 11 no votes. Article 3 passes by a grievous majority.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I want to mark in my vote.
Why don't you come up to the mic? So we can get it on the record, sir.
I'd like to mark in my vote.
You want to protect your vote?
I'll vote back my vote.
Yeah. All right, you stick, that's called restriking reconsideration. I have a motion to restrict reconsideration, a second by Pat Costantino. All in favor say yea?
Yea!
Any opposed say no? The vote is restricted. Thank you, get back.
Madam Moderator. Madam Moderator. I'd like to restrict my vote on Article 4.
I have a vote to restrict reconsideration on Article 4. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr.? I never miss an episode, so don't really mess that up. Langioli. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article 4 or operating budget, say yea.
Yea!
Any opposed say no? The yays have it. We're restricting reconsideration on Article 4. Thank you. All right, you all ready to move to Article 5? Mr. Mitchell is. Let's read Article 5. Roads, bridges, sidewalks, capital reserve fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $120,000 to be added to the town roads, bridges, and sidewalks capital reserve fund. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. A majority vote is required. Is there a motion?
Madam Moderator, I would just vote to the town for Article 5.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Jerry. Mr. Adams, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, please, thank you. So as of 12/31/2024, the capital reserve fund has a balance of $116,893. With the addition of $120,000, puts the balance at $236,893. The tax impact is about 11 cents per thousand or $11 per 100,000 in property valuation. Projects scheduled for 2025 are including repaving the tree streets such as Maple Court, Poplar, and then the High Street extension. And then monies incurred for 2024 include finishing the paving projects that were started in the fall of 2023, which will be the applying of the co, the layering covert course for the top layer of Morrison Avenue and Frank Street.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to Article 5? Mr. Wright.
Chase the high five thirty one Main Street. Looking at last year's upoperation of $90,000, I'm curious why we were looking at the basically 33% increase over last year's. Typically, historically, it's been a contribution to the fund. And what's the long term? What's the five year plan?
Mr. Wright, I heard why the increase from 90 to 120, and what is the long term? I think you said five year plan. Somebody speak to that. Mr. Pearson.
So in looking at the plan of all the town roads, of course, this is over 30 years. There's about $3.5 million worth of paving that's been identified based on the size of the roads and the schedule by which the Public Works Director is determining whether to be done. And, and we, so therefore, the amounts that we've raised in prior years are not sufficient to keep up with the paving projects that are scheduled. So we need to raise an amount from each year. And eventually, this will have to probably increase further. But some of those, some of those roads, when you look at the road plan that's on the website of Public Works, some of them are out pretty far. So it's just difficult to determine. But in the near term, we're looking at $120,000 for the next several years.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, you also have a comment or question?
Yeah, I have a question. Charles Mitchell, Charles Mitchell.
Yeah, I have a question. Charles Mitchell, Charles Mitchell, I can't hear the room. I was wondering what the status is of the repair and paving of the sidewalk between the intersection where Park Street is out to the riverfront park area.
Can someone from the selector answer that question?
Madam Moderator, if the moderator would recommend Public Works Director Shane Dow, you can probably try and answer that.
Shane, if you could join us, we'll repeat the question if you did not hear it. Mr. Mitchell, as Mr. Dow approaches, could you repeat your question?
I think it will.
Yes, please.
Question was, what is the status of the repair and paving of the sidewalk between Riverfront Park and down to the corner of Park Street?
As, as of right now, we don't have a schedule. We're gonna finish the curbing that we started a few years ago. We want to finish the curbing and, well, my knowledge, it was just gonna be all re-shaped in there. That was a prior discussion that we made, was the remodeling of grassy in that area.
Mr. Mitchell, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious whether or not that you have that funds already for that, and that, or do we need to uncover more money?
No, because we have all the old man show up and at the yard and everything. It's just a big grassy, we got the, the curbs there, it's just like, yeah, it's gone.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Alright, anyone have any other questions on Article Five, please approach the mic. Mr. Langio.
Nathan Langio, Winter Street. What is the total mileage of town roads that we have to maintain? And do we have to maintain any dirt or non-paved roads at this point in time? Thank you.
Thank you. Does someone have an answer to the amount of mileage that we maintain as a town and of that roadway, dirt, and so forth? If Dow, you've become a popular person for this particular area, why don't you speak out there just a little bit? Let's not guess, let's make sure we know. If we have an approximate that we're confident in, that would be appropriate?
We have about eleven miles of town road.
And Mr. Dow, of those approximate eleven miles, do you know, if you don't know, what amount of them are dirt or unpaved roadways?
Maybe three-quarters of a mile is dirt.
Thank you for that. Mr. Damon.
On Damon, I'd like to, please explain to me why the project of Morrissey Street, Grant Street, isn't left on hand?
Answer the question of Morrison, Mr. Damon, was it Second Street?
Grant Street.
Grant Street, why they're unfinished? Ms. Costantino.
It was late in the season, and as usual, we always wait until the spring to put the layering coat on. It's not unusual for us to do that in, in the past two years ago.
Thank you. Anyone else who has a question on Article Five, please go to the mic. Are we ready for the question? Saw a big thumbs up back there, okay. The article has read, Roads, Bridges, Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty thousand dollars to be added to the town roads, bridges, and sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. A vote of yea is in favor of passing the article. A vote of no is the opposite. So, all those in favor of Article Five, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed say no.
No.
Article Five passes. Just to keep us awake. Alright, moving on to Article Six. The Highway Capital, excuse me, Capital Reserve Fund to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be added to the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. Could someone, do I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move to the town adopt Article Six as proposed.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Adams, speak to your motion.
Yes, Madam Moderator, thank you. The fund had a balance of sixty-two thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars as of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four. And adding sixty thousand to it in twenty twenty-five would bring the balance to one hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The tax impact is less than six cents per one thousand of property valuation. For a property valued at a hundred thousand, that would be less than six dollars additional tax for this article in twenty twenty-five. We need to raise a minimum of sixty thousand dollars each year to meet our capital equipment needs for the Public Works Department for the next ten years. This amount is dependent upon many assumptions, including the residual value of equipment being sold or traded, and the cost of availability of new and used equipment. Note, there is another warrant article to reinstate the recycling fund to help offset the sixty thousand dollars needed to be raised each year. This article will be discussed later in the meeting during discussion of warrant article number eleven. The next piece of equipment we need to replace is the nineteen ninety-nine International with a new International CB, or commercial vehicle, or equipment. This vehicle is backed under both Chevy and International brands, and has become a popular replacement vehicle for double trucks. The approximate cost outfitted is a hundred eighty thousand dollars, estimated to be purchased in April of twenty twenty-six. In twenty twenty-four, we purchased a two thousand sixteen used low mileage, had roughly twenty thousand, pickup truck with a plow for the director's use for a total of thirty-five thousand dollars, part of which was paid for by cargo funds.
Thank you. Does anyone want to speak or have questions on Article Six? Please go to the mic.
Could he go through that again, the actual cost? It's gonna be per thousand. Because the Article Four, a hundred twenty thousand, the way I understood it, it was eleven cents. What is the cost per thousand on this? Maybe I heard wrong.
Mr. Adams, can you repeat the impact of the tax?
Yes. So, the tax impact is less than six cents per one thousand of property valuation.
Okay, that makes sense, because the other one was eleven cents.
Yep, would you like me to repeat the rest of that?
No.
Nope.
Thank you so much. Any other questions on Article Six? Are we ready for the question? Okay, Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be added to the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. A vote of yea is in favor of passing the article. A vote of no is the opposite. All those in favor of Article Six, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed say no. And the article passes. Moving on to Article Seven. Article Seven, Reevaluation Capital Reserve Fund to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand four hundred twenty dollars to be added to the reevaluation Capital Reserve Fund established in two thousand and two. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee and requires a majority vote. Do I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town adopt Article Seven as proposed.
Do I have a second? I get on the back. Please speak to your motion.
The Capital Reserve Fund is used to pay for the cost of the townwide revaluation every five years. The next update contract is twenty twenty-nine and is estimated to be ninety-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. The Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of five thousand four hundred eighteen dollars as of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four. So, each year, we need to add approximately eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars thereafter. Tax impact for this warrant is less than two cents per thousand, or less than two dollars per a hundred thousand property valuation.
Anyone wishing to speak to Article Seven, please go to the mic. Alright.
Move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Damon. I hear a call to question. Do I have a second? Article Mitchell, alright. Let me read Article Seven. Reevaluation CRF to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars to be added to the reevaluation Capital Reserve Fund established in two thousand and two. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. A vote of yea is in favor of passing the article. A vote of no is the opposite. All in favor of Article Seven, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed say no. The Article Seven passes. Thank you. I know we're all excited about thinking about revaluation. Little chemical salon grants, I think, more. Alright, Article Eight. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the town buildings' infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. Do I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town adopt Article Eight as proposed.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Adams, please speak to your motion.
Do you? Current ETF balance is at forty thousand eight, uh, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That's forty thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine. Adding twenty thousand dollars will bring the balance to sixty thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The tax impact is less than two cents per one thousand of property valuation. For a property valued at a hundred thousand dollars, that would be less than two dollars of additional tax for this article. The town operates five buildings, the Public Works Building, the Town Hall, the Police Station, and the Senior Center, and the Riverfront Pavilion. The oldest, which is Town Hall, is a hundred forty-six years old, and the newest, the Police Station, is four years old. Capital funds could be used for expenses like roof replacements. Town Hall's roof has issues, and if needed, replacement, the current estimate is approximately a hundred twenty thousand dollars. Eventually, the PD's roof will need to be replaced in twenty-plus years, which is estimated at two hundred thousand. Mechanical equipment and major building systems such as boilers, ACs, things like that, and then any masonry repair, which there is masonry that needs to be done to Town Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. So, are there any questions on Article Eight? Mr. Scanlon, do you have a question? Seeing no questions on Article Eight, we're gonna move this forward. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the town buildings' infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget, but this article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. A vote of yea is in favor of passing Article Eight. A vote of no is the opposite. All in favor of Article Eight, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed say no, and the article passes. Alright, moving on to Article Nine. The Island Capital Reserve Fund to see if the town will vote to raise the appropriation of ten thousand dollars to be added to the island preservation and improvements Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee, and majority vote is required. Do I have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town adopt Article Thirteen as proposed.
That would be Article Nine, is that correct?
Yes, Article Nine. Take my word for it, yeah.
Alright, your motion is to move Article Nine as presented.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Bob Hardy. Everybody just in favor, do a power pose. Alright, we're on Article Nine, so New Hampshire, and the motion is to pass Article Nine with a second by Mr. Hardy. Mr. Scanlon, would you like to speak to your motion?
Okay, so, I think I talk to you guys every year about this one article. So, the ten thousand dollars is to go into our Capital Reserve Fund that's for the, of course, to take care of the island preservation improvements. Presently, we have a hundred and one thousand eighty-seven dollars, and with the ten thousand dollars, it will bring you up to a hundred and ten thousand and eighty-seven dollars. So, it's less than one cent per thousand, or less than one dollar for a hundred thousand property. So, one of the things that we've all been wondering and questioning everywhere I go, it comes up, is the island bridge. For all you wanna know about that. So, this money is also used to augment the funds for that bridge, as well as to repair the stones and that around the island, so we can get the bridge back open and start using it. The board, we still be allowing to borrow up to one million dollars that expires in twenty twenty-eight. So, right now, we're close to signing a contract with AM Grant Bridge Company to repair the bridge. This will be over a year-plus period at the cost of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, much less than what we intend to borrow and repair. So, the town will have a little more than six hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars that can be made on the following sources. The Congressional Grant, providing that money is still available, has been approved and everything, but it's federal money. The fund balance from this, which is a hundred and ten thousand dollars and nine hundred and ten eighty-seven thousand dollars, and the State Bridge Grant Fund, which is seventy-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, and a donation of fifteen hundred dollars. So, it looks like we can get the bridge done, and putting this ten thousand dollars in there will also help keep the stuff so we can get the stones down and that, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mr. King.
Yes, he has answered a lot of the questions I had, because if he hadn't gone through it like that, I was wondering that, we put ten thousand into the island, but we can't get to the island. Although, I, I think that the cost of the bridge is low. Once, I really believe, once they take that pot, they're gonna find stuff that's worse than what we expect. And most of the time, when we do repairs, oh, I didn't expect this, or we didn't see that, so, it's, I think, still, it's on the cost more. And what was the final figure on that, that you expected?
On the proposed bridge reconstruction?
Yeah.
So, they, they fund?
No, please go ahead.
So, maybe, um, cost, um, is five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We will have in funds that are promised to us, and that we've saved, is six hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and ninety-seven. And we also have the ability to borrow up to a million. So, if you look at the numbers, when we came here two, three years ago, we got permission to bond that amount, borrow up to a million. We don't have to do that, so.
So, if I can read correctly, Mr. Scanlon, you have a potential estimate of around roughly just over five hundred thousand dollars, and the other sources that you're referencing are federal, federal and other avenues to offset the costs of that spare?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. King, do you have a follow-up?
So, potentially, this thing will pretty much be paid for.
That's what it sounds like.
That's what it sounds like.
And as you said, if there are smaller ones, we did, everybody gave us permission to borrow up to a million, but we don't have a million of them.
No, you're not.
Yeah, but thinking, although the bridge is not being repaired a hundred percent historically correct, it's going to be repaired properly and have proper symmetry, and have all the same appearances as what it does.
Are they going to remove this? They probably have to, to do.
Mr. King, you have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay. Are they going to physically remove the bridge to repair it? Mr. Pearson does have his hand up to assist if you would like it.
Tim, probably go in if I miss anything, but yes, it's an involved process, and there will be a crane that will lift the bridge up, and the removal will be all done properly and thoroughly, and then put back in. Bridges are going to be lifted up over the wires. Room three and eleven will have to be rerouted a bit through a couple of farms. This could be quite the size.
Before we go any further, Mr. Pearson, did you want to add any additional information?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to address the repair issues. The, uh, the engineering study that was done identified twenty of the trusses that needed to be addressed, and the company that, that we're open to contract with shortly, maybe the next month or so, is very experienced in, uh, bridge design, repair, restoration, and they've thoroughly looked at this, and if there, if there are any changes to that, the, the initial, um, the initial look at it was they felt that some of those twenty may not need to be addressed, so if anything, the engineering may have been a little overstated.
So hopefully, that's right, that it's not as bad as what we thought it would be.
Thank you. Okay, we settle. We are on Article nine. Please go ahead.
My question is, what is the life expectancy of repaired bridge as opposed to replacing with a new bridge?
Thank you for that question. Does anyone have, Esther Hillier?
Yes, and, and so the body of the state is Madam Moderator, I might have a little leeway.
Doesn't help. How are you doing, Mr. David?
I knew you'd keep me in check. It will be thirty years, is what our guarantee is. It's been forty since there have been any substantial repairs to that bridge. And, and just as a matter of history, this company, A M Grant, uh, they, they do bridges all over the, in fact, they're in Kentucky now. They've been in existence for years, and my previous job as town administrator in Andover, I used them on two separate bridges. They are fantastic folks. It, uh, there, when Tim Pearson and I met with this engineer, we went over and looked at that bridge, we had some pretty strong numbers that had been given to us and ideas. We were looking at it somewhere in the range of maybe two point one million dollars. And, um, this particular bridge company has done these bridges. They specialize in pedestrian bridges, and, um, the engineer told Tim and I in a meeting, Ian Shane now, our, our TPW director, um, that he felt very comfortable taking this bridge out in two sections, as selectmen Scanlon said, we will crane it out over the wires, but it'll come out in two sections. It'll go to Ashland Reef, to their, um, engineering yard, and it will be completely restored as close to original as we get, and, and, and that is very close. So, uh, we're, we're in hopes that we can do that, take it out this year. It's gonna be about, uh, a year for repairs, and then put it back next year, and we can access the island again.
Mr. Pearson, you have some additional information you want to share?
Yes, I just wanted to address the issue of a quote-unquote "new" bridge. So the five hundred thousand dollar grant that was written for this bridge is, is through the National Park Service and the Historic Preservation Grant. So we would not qualify for the half million dollars, which is gonna pay for the majority of this, were we not restoring the bridge. So that's really an important piece. There were no other grant monies available for a new bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Follow, Mr. King?
Yes, I would just like to commend the town for hiring Grant to do these bridges. He has been on many covered bridges. The father, Milton Grant, was the last of the covered bridge builders. This guy was something else, okay? He knew his stuff. I personally knew the guy, because he had books, and he sold a book company. And he would come down, and him and I would chit-chat and sign his books. I think a very good choice in, in Grant, and the sons have taken it over the grandsons. They'll do a good job.
Thank you, Mr. King, for that information. Article, we are on Article nine. Are there any other questions or comments that? Mr. Lear, I think I heard something.
Ask the question.
Call the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Bob Hardy. The question has been called. All right, let me read Article nine. All, all in favor of calling the question, say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Article nine. Island CF R. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to be added to the Tilt Island Preservation Improvements Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. A vote of yea is in favor of passing Article nine, a vote of no is the opposite. All in favor of passing Article nine, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, say no. Article nine passes. Thank you for all that additional information, because I'm too, was curious about the status of the bridge, Mr. King. All right, moving on to Article ten. Mill Foil Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand dollars to be added to the Lake Improvement Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget, but this article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. Do I have a motion?
Madam, Madam Moderator, I move that the town adopt Article ten as proposed.
Wait a second. Miss Mitchell, give us a second. Let's, let's get some diversity here. Please speak to your motion, Mr. Scanlon.
Okay, so we've been putting money into this fund for many years, and they've been battling the mill foil throughout Silver Lake, as well as in Wennis Quon. The fund has a balance of four thousand and eighty dollars. With the passage of this six thousand dollars, we'll bring it up to ten thousand and eighty dollars. Tax on this warrant article is less than one cent per thousand, or less than one dollar for a hundred thousand valuation. In twenty-four, there was mill foil remediation products, including Silver Lake, as well as Wennis Quon Watership Network, and they are reviewed by the Conservation Commission to make sure that everything that we were charged for was actually part of Tilton, and they give us the amounts of mill foil that they removed. It's, um, it's been a very successful project, just to keep up with it, to keep our lakes free of the, the mill foil.
Great. Anyone else wanting to speak to Article ten, please come to the mic. Mr. Wright?
Jason Wright, West Main Street. I do support this article. I have it for several years. It would be nice, maybe, I don't know if it's too much paperwork on, but in the future, I think we should rename, move on to Mr. Mead and dedicate it to him.
And that recommendation, please take that into consideration, so anyone else wants to speak to Article ten?
Alex Martin, Main Street. Is there public access to Silver Lake?
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, uh, yes, so by the power generation, there's a little ramp there in the parking lot that you can use. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else for Article ten? Are we ready for the question? All right. Reading Article ten, because I have to. Mill Foil Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate sum of six thousand dollars to be added to the Lake Improvement Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. A vote of yea is in favor of Article ten, a vote of no is the opposite. All in favor of Article ten, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, say no. Article ten passes. Moving on to Article eleven. Recycling Revolving Fund for Highway Equipment Purchases. What a time twister. All right. To see if the town will vote to establish a transfer station revolving fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash H for the purpose of paying for highway equipment with recycling revenues, and to raise appropriate the sum of one dollar to be deposited in that fund. All revenues from recycling generated at the transfer station will be deposited in the fund, and the money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year, and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund balance. Money in the revolving fund may be used towards the purchase of highway equipment. Further, to name the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund, the town treasurer shall have custody of all the monies in the fund, and shall pay out the same only upon order of the governing body, and no further approvals required by the legislative body to expend. Such funds may be expended only for the purpose for which the fund was created. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee, and a majority vote is required. Do I have a motion on Article eleven?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town adopt Article eleven as proposed.
Great. Do I have a second? Second, Madam Chair. Mr. Jessman, please speak to your motion on Article eleven.
Um, as you know, or as some of you know, I should say, we have a compactor down at the highway garage, and we are now collecting corrugated cardboard, aluminum, and tin cans to be crushed down into bales, and then we sell them through the NRRA. So far, we haven't collected vast amounts, certainly. Hopefully, it's been picking up. I don't know, the Public Works Director is up there. Is it picking up, Shane?
Yeah.
You can't throw questions across the crowd, please. You'll, you'll worry Mr. Howard if we, if we need to. Please continue on.
My apologies, Madam Chair. The monies collected will go to offset the sixty thousand dollars that we've been putting in to the equipment fund, and the transfer station, still rapping up the education and information on the types of requirements of the materials that we actually make money on. Cardboard, clean, corrugated, no waxed boxes, pizza boxes, cans, both steel, tin, and aluminum are accepted. They must be empty, and that is currently what we're taking, but there are discussions about newsprint and various things that we can put together ourselves to help offset that sixty thousand dollars, and that's it.
Thank you. Are there questions on Article eleven? Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Jason Wright, West Main Street. As, as it reads and as it's presented, I don't support it today, because my understanding that we lost our curbside recycling due to changes in the market, changes in the industry, and that there's no money, there's no money, and that it would offset the cost of our solid waste haul. So I would be concerned that we're, we're seeing that we're gonna make money on this, and why wouldn't it have been used to offset the cost of our other solid wastes because of the changes with curbside? That's part of it. The other piece of it is, I don't agree with the wording of all revenues going into this fund, because there's cost of the bale, a cost of the electricity, a cost of the staffing, a cost of the structure that we put the baler in, and those costs. And any future operating costs, I think, should first be detected, so I, I would say that, I wouldn't support this issue this year, but I would support a rewrite to say all proceeds or profits from said venture be put into a revolving fund for equipment. So conceptually, I understand, but I, I don't agree with how it was written today.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, Chuck Mitchell, Kiel, feel well. I guess what bothers me a lot is, as I look around, even the room here, I see all these little plastic bottles. I have watched in the supermarkets day after day when I go and see cases and cases of water, jugs and jugs of water, and the amount of plastic that leaves the supermarket every day is phenomenal. I happen to be a user of a lot of that because of my wealth, so I don't have really a choice. But it really bothers me when I take a look at all the plastic, whether or not it's water bottles or soda bottles, and I'd really like to select on the somehow or other to try to find a way to allow, continue, or to have recycling of plastics, even at a loss. I mean, it's phenomenal. I'm sure you all have the same kind of issue. Thank you.
What's happening? Thank you. Mr. Scanlon?
Tim Scanlon, Main Castor Hill. I have a question about the wording in here, where it describes that the government, government body, where the approval is required. So would this fund also be where we would buy a new piece of equipment? And is that word such that you would come before the legislative body, for you have a new plow truck or a new excavator or whatnot? I, I have a question about that wording.
Can someone from the select board answer the question about the purpose of that wording when you think the governing body's decision-making capacity associated with this fund?
So the, uh, the selectmen would be agents for this, but the intention of this is to offset, uh, so, uh, offset the other warrant article that raises sixty thousand dollars a year. We have to raise sixty thousand dollars a year for the highway equipment. So if we, uh, in twenty twenty-four, we had about seventeen thousand dollars' worth of revenues, recycling revenues, at the transfer station. So were that in a revolving fund, we would have only had to raise forty-three thousand dollars in the capital reserve, uh, for the capital reserve fund. So that's the intention. It's not intended to specifically purchase equipment out of, but as the selectmen are agents for the fund, they have that.
Any additional questions?
Please come ahead. I have a question, and I don't know, Madam Moderator, if it's based on fact or hearsay, but I was told that a bale was purchased with aluminum cans, and it was the wrong one, so I need to get another one. Is that misinformation I received?
Someone clarify that? Mr. Jessman?
We had a donation of a bale. We didn't pay any money. As it turns out, we'd have done better by throwing in a few thousand dollars and doing a more industrialized baler, because the baler we've got makes, for lack of a better technical term, little bales, and transporting little bales is more expensive than transporting big bales. So that, that's the question about what size the baler was. We didn't spend any money on the baler, although we do for the electricity and a guide to work the station as well. But that's just part of the, the process of recycling our own stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Jessman. Still on Article eleven? Please, Mr. David, go ahead.
On David's day, go ahead. I too have a problem with the verdict in this article, and I don't think it's appropriate. It, it's just, it's just too, too medievalist here, but I want to say that I'm, I'm in favor just because of the verdict. As a concept, it's fine, but the verdict is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. Anyone else want to speak to Article eleven? Please come to the mic.
Nathan Langione, Winter Street. So without this fund, what happens to the, the revenue or profits from recycling? Does that all need to be spent by the highway department within that calendar year? Or, you know, where, where do the funds currently go, I guess, without this, this article? Thank you.
So the question is, in the existing budget, the money that this town accrues from recycling, where does that funding go in our budget?
That money, along with every other, uh, revenue that comes into the town, goes into the general fund.
Any further questions? Any other questions on Article eleven? Are you ready to call a question? All right. I need to read it to you. Article eleven. Recycling Revolving Fund for Highway Equipment Purchases. To see if the town will vote to establish a transfer station revolving fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash A for the purpose of paying for highway equipment with recycling revenues, and to raise appropriate the sum of one dollar to be deposited into that fund. All revenues from recycling generated at the transfer station will be deposited in the fund, and the money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year, and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund balance. Money in the revolving fund may be used towards the purchase of highway equipment. Further, to name the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund, the town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund, and shall pay out the same only upon order of the governing body, and no further approval is required from the legislative body to expend. Such funds may be expended only for the purpose for which the fund was created. This article is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. A vote of yea is in favor of Article eleven, a vote of no is the opposite. All in favor of Article eleven, say yea.
Yea.
Yay.
All opposed, say no.
No.
I'm going to have us raise our cards for my assistant on this. Please join me. All right. All in favor who voted yea, please raise your votes. All noes, please raise your cards. It's the closest one so far. The yeses were twenty-four, the noes were twenty-one. So the article passes by three votes. Wow. That's democracy. Okay, as we already handled Article Twelve, we'll move to Article Thirty. I have a motion to restrict reconsideration by Pat Constantinos, there's a second, Mr. Adams. All in favor of restricting reconsideration, vote yea.
Yay.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The yays have it. Restrict reconsideration. All right. As I stated, we already took care of Article Twelve, moving to Article Thirteen to enact any other business that may legally come before the meeting. If anyone has anything they'd like to bring before the body, please do so at this time. Mr. Devolder, you were on the move before this meeting. I'm sorry to jump out of that.
Sorry to keep you off here a little longer. In the beginning of the meeting, the question was asked for legal fees for a suit, I guess we have against the town. My question is, can you, is there any recourse from the people taking this court? If we win the case, can they, are they required to pay our legal fees?
The question from Mr. Devolder is, in any litigation, are we going to seek attorney's fees if we win that suit?
Yes, that's a question for the lawyers, but it is a possibility, but...
Mr. Devolder, if I could for you. I'm hearing you suggest that as a taxpayer, you'd like to make sure that if there's a possibility, we seek attorney's fees to cover our costs.
Yes, thank you. And...
Follow-up?
Follow-up, please. The other question would be regarding, as a trustee, I'm very pleased that the town also has my back on a number of things, and the boards as well. But I would like to see, going forward, perhaps something in place where, I assume we consult our attorneys as to whether people should accuse themselves or if there's an issue. And if the attorneys state, and they're expensive and we pay for them, that someone should take an action and chooses not to follow the attorney's recommendation. I, as a taxpayer, find it hard to say why are we paying for that liability if they've been wanting by their own pound attorneys to back down, and where there might be across any board in town. So I'd like that looked into a bit as well, so we're not facing a lot of legal bills down the road. Thank you.
Just to remind the body that if there are attorney-client conversations that are occurring, they actually shouldn't be occurring in public because they're protected conversation. Just as we continue to triage information, this is what we're suggesting. Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Let me make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. David was going to say something, and then I'll recognize you, Mr. David.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Tom David Gilford. I'm looking at Article Five, it's going to increase our taxes eleven cents. Article Six is six cents. Article Seven is two cents. Article Eight is 1.8 cents. Article Nine is 1/10 of a cent. And Article Ten is eight tenths of a cent. It's 21.6 cents so far increased. That does not include Article Three and Article Four in my calculations. Now, I don't know if I speak for anybody opposite me, but I think it's enough. Don't we pay enough? If you want us to pay more, I don't know how you're going to get it out of us. It just isn't there. The money just isn't there. Please use caution when you want to, Article is required of a lot of money. Thank you.
And Mr. David, if you'd just give me a Madam Moderator's letting, I would like to take a moment to thank everyone who helped support every election that we've had the last twelve months. I don't know if you've noticed, and people's cellphones should be quiet. I don't know if you've noticed, we've had more elections in the last twelve months than I've seen in a long time. So that does not happen without the support of all people working that election, volunteering their time, many of the town's employees setting it up. So I just, if we could just give a round of applause to everybody who helps support every election. Mr. Wright, I will fully hear your motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Mr. Jessman gets a second. All in favor of adjourned, please say yea.
Yay.
That's yea, all opposed. Any noes? You're alone.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great weekend and a happy, safe, and happy day.